Order, it is now six forty PM. Dr. Head, do we have any introductions of special guests that we need to recognize?
Yes, we have Chevelle Price, who is with Community Impact. Chevelle, if you would, glad to have you. And Gerald, do you want to introduce your student ambassadors and thank you for hosting us? You want to tell the board how much work goes into moving the meeting down here? Helen can tell them, but I know you can too.
It's what we get paid for, to serve our students and our community.
Well, that's a good answer. All right.
Good. Very good.
Chairman Smith, members of the board, Dr. Head, it's truly an honor to host you at the original campus, growing from a small college in a high school gym to almost 100,000 strong with our accredited and non-accredited students. It's just a great experience and pretty humbling, especially with our community members here, some retired faculty and staff, but also my colleagues from across the system. I'm also honored to introduce three of our student ambassadors. We have nine right now. And so our student ambassadors are engaged in special occasions, walking around campus in their beautiful blue coats, giving advice, and they're our current students. And so three of them here, if you could please stand as I read your names. Christian Nelson, Brooke Williams, and Cynthia Perez. Not only do they tell people where to go and tour, but they are also, thank you.
You're welcome.
Trust me, good. They also participate in leadership programs, and they are led by Ms. Rebecca Stevenson in the back over there. Thank you.
Thank you to all the North Harris people that made all this happen, because I know this is a lot of work. And I know when I walk around and look at things and go, "How come you're not doing that? And how come you're doing that?" There's some stress added to it, but that's what I do. So do you want to introduce your person? While Jennifer is coming up here, I want to, we have Jim Kane is in the audience. And Jim is the former superintendent of Klein. Jim, thank you for...
Yes, thank you. I just want to introduce, we have a new supplier diversity director, Monica Campagna. She wants to stand up right there. Monica, thank you. Just a little bit real quick on her background. She has four years as a training director from University Agency for Knowledge in both Ecuador and Spain. She has been a program manager in organizational design at AIG, a quality consultant for Qualit Plus International, where she conducted ISO audits to resolve performance gaps. Six years as HR director for ISM International Academy, and she has a master's in educational psychology. So we're all very excited to have her join us.
And tell them what she's going to be, her job, her role.
So for supplier diversity director, her role is going to be helping us reach out to vendors and help train them and help show them how to come and bid and submit qualifications, submit proposals, and do work for Lone Star College as we do our procurement process.
You know, one of the things, Jennifer, she was working real hard today down in Akers Holmes community, and she told us all these plans to do. So I told her that she had to make a small speech to the entire group tonight, and I don't want to back down on what I told her she was going to do. So if you would, come to the mic for a second. Now, you're the only one that's got advance notice on having to do this.
Well, thank you all. I'm so glad and honored to be here. I came from Ecuador with pursuing dream of a career with a purpose and also to make a difference. So when I applied to Lone Star College, I saw the cultural beliefs, and I really fell in love with them and got inspired by them, and I thought, "I have to work here." And I thought that Lone Star College is an organization with a purpose, and in the little time that I have been here, I can see that it's true. So I'm very happy for it. And well, I want to do an impact in community by reinforcing our program, our supplier diversity program. I want to build the relationships, to build partnerships, and also help Lone Star College to have the best quality supplier diversity suppliers, and also help suppliers to get benefit and also grow. I think we can achieve it by doing a lot of training, by doing a lot of getting everybody on board, and also with the great team of supply management. So I'm very happy to be here, and I... So I'm very happy to be here, and I will do my best effort for Lone Star College.
All right, well, we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Helen, we need to interview her and put her on the website for why she came to work here. So we have a special guest tonight and a special recognition. Asidra Garza, would you come up, please? So Asidra is with LULAC. He's also been working with us, but I wanted him to talk a little bit about what he's been doing and why he's here tonight.
Thank you, Chancellor, Mr. President, Board. About three years ago, I was asked by Massey and my, our dear friend Jeff Mosley, who is the head of Texas Association for Business, asked me to see if I could meet with them, and they had something exciting they wanted to talk to me about. And they approached me and says, we want you to meet the chairman, Mario Castillo, and see if you can schedule some of your time. We did shortly after that, but what got me excited was this. The first thing he says, he says, look, I work for Dr. Stephen Head, and he is really serious about change. And that, to me, of course, is sincerity, is more important than anything else that you can go out there and say, I will do, I will do this and that. But when it comes from within, that somebody has that kind of trust. And then, secondly, the fact that since then, since I met him, several things have occurred to Lone Star College that have been really, really positive. At that time, when I met, I don't know if it was LULAC was part of it, but I know that the, it's called the Greater Houston Coalition for Justice, had a lawsuit against Lone Star. And because of his outreach, because of Mr. Castillo's outreach, that had gone away. And a lot of good things have happened that I see all around. I had the opportunity a couple of years to work on some of your projects. There's an activity that occurs, Mayor Silvestre Turner's Juneteenth Parade, and we teamed together, LULAC and Lone Star, and we had some of the most successful, and many of your staff participated. Amos McDonald, one who rolled up his sleeve and started serving, but we served 2,000 plates to everyone at the end of the Juneteenth Parade. A lot of volunteers, just a good activity. Now Pastor Perry, who is a pastor at the church where the parade ends, is looking forward. He liked the barbecue, and he wants to have it again next year or so. I say this because I can see, you can't have the bliss of the morning but for the darkness of the night. And this is what we've seen, what I have seen. I've seen a lot of change in Lone Star. And I am the vice chair of LULAC at the state level on education, and we recognize the fact that Lone Star has taken some major steps in recognition of diversity and embracement of diversity. We have seen that at the highest, the chief operating officer is now an Hispanic, a very young Hispanic with a bright future, very talented. So it comes not only from the leadership that, Chancellor, that you provide for the college, but also for, because you recommend, and it's the board that authorizes. So on behalf of LULAC, we want to commend and recognize, not let it go unnoticed, all of the changes that I see occurring in this community. We're not adversaries. We're working together on these projects that we have going on, and we've got some really exciting projects. As a matter of fact, tomorrow, we're meeting at lunch on, I think, you're off tomorrow, right? But at lunch, he's still working. Okay? We've got, meet together on a really interesting project I can't announce yet, but it's a really, it's a really unifying, particularly in these times when the politics have been so divisive. It's so gratifying and rewarding to have something positive, something that builds a community, something that is not separatist. As I tell my dear friend Skipper Dipple, you know, there's many things that maybe my grandkids did not see, and, but that's history. That's the way it occurred. But I don't want my grandkid to get one item that comes from your grandkid. We have to all grow together as a community, and that's part of the theme that we're going to have at the next, the next project. I have a, an award that you have, you have some documentation there with you, but this is the Conscious Builder Award.
Mario.
Mario. Right in the center.
LULAC proudly presents the champion and guardian of conscience and human dignity is Texas State LULAC recipient of the 2018 Conscious Builder Award. This award goes out to Mario K. Castillo, whose life is a testimony centered on these core values. LULAC honors Mario K. Castillo.
I think it's customary that when you get an award, you have to make some sort of acceptance speech.
Thank you, Asidra.
Well, I think I talk enough at board meetings. You know, like, when I went to San Antonio to accept the award at the LULAC State Convention, I said, it's a team effort. It's not me by myself. I have a wonderful staff. Actually, most of them are sitting right here in the COO's office. They help a great deal. It's support of the board, support of the Chancellor. Every time that I've come with some initiative or even some harebrained idea about how we can increase diversity and do it better, I've always had the support. So while I am the recipient of the award, I accept it on behalf of the whole college. So thank you.
Thank you. You know, I heard through the grapevine that there's something else that you're doing that will, in my opinion, if it's true, and I want you to tell me about it once I tell you what it is, that you're doing some great things on behalf of our custodial staff. But I couldn't, I didn't fully understand what that program was, but some type of educational pursuit that you had worked out to encourage those individuals to make themselves better and bigger and all those good things. Tell us about that.
Well, you know, I like to keep my good deeds secret, but...
But I heard it, well, I didn't know whether it was true or not, so I just wanted to confirm it, and I think this group is a good place to confirm that.
Yes, it is true. It is true. So out of, out of one of my budgets, I figured out a way, with the help of continuing ed and Linda Head, and of course, the Chancellor's support, that we are actually offering to our custodial staff and our, also, I'm about to open it up to the groundskeeping, ground, groundskeeping staff, that anyone that wants to get a GED, and usually to get a GED, you have to obviously speak English, and so ESL classes as well. So we figured out a way that we made it completely free for those folks to go through an ESL course, go through the GED course, all the exams are free for them, and also, we paid for all their books. And we worked it out with their supervisors so that they can attend after work or in between shifts.
Excellent. Well, congratulations. Thank you for doing that for our staff. And you never know, the next, well, a future chief executive officer may come from that particular group, so you will be the person that they will always remember and hold in higher esteem.
You know, and it's funny, because sort of addressed that, I remember I was having a meeting with some of the folks that were sort of helping me execute this, and I remember I was asked the question, like, what's the strategy here? And I said, there is no strategy, it's just, let's help these people. And so that's really all it is about.
Yeah, I think that's commendable.
So we're hoping that some of them will go ahead and continue on with their education, which is part of our budgeting, you know, we pay for employees to take courses here. Then if they want to go on, we have a scholarship for bachelors and masters, and we use auxiliary money and PhD. So do you mind telling them what your mom did?
Oh, no. So my mom was a custodian, and so I've actually, I pretty much know, I know all of the custodians, actually, and I talk to them all the time. And so sometimes they ask me, like, why are you doing this? And I said, because my mother was a custodian, and I never forget that.
Yeah.
So Gerald, do you want to tell them what your mom did?
Can I go sit down now?
Well, no, I like seeing you there. No, I'm just kidding, go ahead.
Thank you, Chancellor. Congratulations, Mario. I'm very proud of you. My mom's name, Trinidad Fernandez-Napollos, a wonderful woman, passed away recently, but she was a janitor for 26 years before she became sick. And when she got sick, the CEO of the hospital that she worked at extended her health insurance for six months because of the good work that she did. And until the age of 65, they covered her life insurance, just because she was a wonderful person. So thank you, Dr. Head, thank you. Dr. Smith, thank you, Board, for the support, for the ideas that Mario has, the presidents and everybody else has, to make sure that we're focused on education, but also focused on humanity and quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Asidra. In addition to all the things he does, he's very humble. We had, you saw, we have to make him get up here and make him tell about his good deeds, but thank you all. So we have some very decent people working here.
And it is because of these, Gerald, and all of these things put together, because it all started recent. And I'm not criticizing anything before that, but I'm saying, recent, we've seen a tremendous change in Lone Star, and now it's the biggest college in Texas. And Mario, I don't like, I don't like this part of him. I'm from A&amp;M, we have 68,000, and he says, oh, the little school over there at A&amp;M. Thank you so much. God bless you all.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dr. Head?
No.
Okay, thank you. Board members, at this point, we need to approve the minutes of our June 7, 2018 budget workshop and our June 7, 2018 workshop and regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
It's second.
Second.
It's been moved in proper second. Any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Poses. Motion passed unanimously. Mr. Chancellor, you are...
Yeah, we have two, I have a couple of quick updates for the board, but I, if we can get this North Harris propaganda out of the way, we'll do that. Although I like the logo, we may, we may adopt that. Helen, I like the, so I had two, which ones first? So you received an email about this, but I want to make sure that you were aware of this again. And we've sent a note out, but this is a major issue for us, and I think the Chronicle of Higher, I think that's what it says down there, Chronicle of Higher Ed, that's where this came from, but I'm very proud of this.
Chair Smith, I just want to make sure that you approve the minutes.
Oh, good.
We did.
Oh, the workshop?
He said both in the motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, no problem.
No, it's all right.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
So even the, even the faculty down there, what's a teaching environment gave us high ranks down there, which I was really, I was really pleased with, and this is two years in a row, but, so we're one of the few colleges in the country that received this kind of award. I think there were four of them. Helen, is that correct, that were? There were surveys, about 40,000 people, I think, filled out, not here, but across the country filled out surveys. So of all the things we've done, and we receive a lot of honors, but when our employees recognize us for the work we do, and they like working here and the diversity and the facilities and job satisfaction is really, really important to me, and the respect and the appreciation, I, and I don't know who voted on the work-life balance, because a lot of us don't have a very good balance, but I'm glad that they think they do, which is good. That's what we're trying to work on. So that's one. Secondly, if you guys would put the other, or are you looking, I'm looking at you, but you're looking at me, so. Got it, okay. Am I controlling the thing? They're all looking at me like, what are you? That's what happens when you're the chancellor, your ability to do common sense stuff goes out the window. So this just came, this is not the same rankings that we had last year, but this is new, and then we'll have another ranking, but this just came out. So keep in mind that there are 1,100 community colleges, and so this is where we are with all minorities, we're number six, and Hispanics, we're number six. We actually were number five last year, and African-Americans, we were number 16. So I, you know, if you, we have work to do. I would like for us to be, really, I'd like for us to be number one in all those categories, but we fell four slots in African-American success, and I think that Quentin is working on, Quentin is working on the African-American initiatives than all the colleges are. So I think, and we really haven't seen any results of that yet, right? I mean, that's still in the process. I think, hopefully, and this usually run behind, I'm optimistic that we're going to see improvements there. We want to be up in the top five of everything, so. And Helen, is that, that's all I had, right? Yes, I just want to let the board know also, sorry, the, I left my notes somewhere between that room and this room and the other room. We have enrollments. My big issue right now, or our big issue, is we're still down on headcount, and that has to do directly with the hurricane, and we know that, and Jennifer will come up in a few minutes and give you updates on where we are with all that. Kingwood is open. We've not fully opened, but we have started rebuilding, and again, that yesterday, they actually started moving stuff around and making noise over there, so that's really good, but our enrollments are being hit by that. And so we're down 6% in headcount. We hope we'll, that'll come up, and we'll only be down a couple of percentage points for the fall. I'd be happy with even. And then, once we are fully open over at Kingwood, I think our enrollments will take off again, because the people are out there, it's just, are you, what are you down now, 23, 24% that much? I didn't see it today.
I'm 16.
Yes. How far?
16.
16%. So those are dollars. We translate those into dollars, and so we're down across the system, though, 6%, right? Which is, right now, that's seven, 7.2 million, something like that?
6.5.
6.5, okay. So that's the financial side of that. So that's, that's my update.
Okay, thank you.
Moved in fast, Chancellor.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Okay, I do, I do have just a few slides, I think they're pulling up right now, just a few things I'm going to go over. Oh, here it is, great. Okay, so I'm going to go over Kingwood, FEMA, and then opening dates for our bond projects. So first, on Kingwood, I mean, this is the big thing that I want to say here, is the build back officially started construction July 30. These are pictures, they started showing up. That is sheet rock.
Is that special sheet rock that's waterproof?
Does it exist?
We're going to build the whole thing waterproof, you're going to be sliding all over the place when you walk over there. So everyone's very excited that that's gotten started, so we are moving over there, and the, yes, the college is open, six of the buildings are still closed, but those six buildings will open, well, five will open in January, the library will likely open shortly thereafter. We will have a... We will have a sort of staggered opening for the library. So, that's my big update on Kingwood, I mean, because we're just, we're moving quickly in that regard. On FEMA, 98% of all of our documentation is turned into FEMA. So, we've had, GP Strategies was approved by this Board sometime this past fall to be our consultants to help us do all of this work with FEMA. So, they are, they had had a few people actually officing with us to do a lot of this, they are now no longer sitting with us, they are winding down their work, because for the most part, everything now is sitting with FEMA for them to review. The main challenge we continue to kind of have there is we treat Kingwood as a campus, while it is multiple buildings, contract-wise, we treat it like a campus, and we turn invoices in for the campus, and FEMA wants to see it by building. So, that is, that tends to be where the challenges have continued to be with FEMA, but we're just continuing to work the process.
Jennifer?
Yes.
No matter how you do it, FEMA will want something different.
Yes, and something more.
That's right.
Yes.
It will always be the case.
But I'm determined.
Good for you.
So, I just wanted to show this list, like, so that list that you can't read is, is the list of all of the separate project worksheets that have been turned into FEMA, and it totals, well, the list I have up here totals 36 million, but now we are up to 37.6 million of project worksheets. So, what we are hoping to accomplish here is somewhere between 8 and 11.8 million in reimbursements from FEMA by the end of this calendar year, and then the balance, the eight point, between 8.3 and 12.1 million in the first quarter of 2019. And so, this is about where we stand in terms of the direct cost impact on Lone Star College. I have two cases here, a lowercase and an uppercase of what this direct impact is on Lone Star College. System-wide Harvey-related damages right now stands at $37.8 million. We are estimating, rough estimate, I do want to do some more work to refine this, but right now, we are estimating about 1.9 million in loss income due to Harvey. That is just only using the drop in credit hours at the Kingwood campus. From that, I am deducting the net insurance proceeds that we have received so far, which is 8.6 million. And then, you can see, this is where my two cases differ, is my range of how much I hope to actually get from FEMA. My lowercase is we, we could potentially get up to a 90% reimbursement, sort of best case. So, that 23.8 million is, I think, our best case for what we see from FEMA. I think, from FEMA on the low side, 16.3 million, that's about a 70% reimbursement rate. So, this puts the direct cost to Lone Star College somewhere between 7.2 million on the low side, on the high side, almost 15 million, as the direct cost impact on us.
Have, have we identified a loss in property tax due to lowered assessments?
I, I've thought about that, that is, I can look at that, it's just going to be extremely difficult to parse out in, once you see a change in appraised value, is that change due to Harvey or not? We don't have, we don't get the tax rolls until later in August, and across the board, overall, we do see growth. Right, so now you would be arguing, did the appraisals grow by less than they would have otherwise? We're not showing negative growth in appraisals.
But we're, we have a, growth of new properties value, growth of value due to new properties, new development, is segregated from the rest.
Yes.
And if we just look at the rest, we should be able to see a difference if there's a great deal of devaluation.
And I will look at that, I will look at that, just, like I said, it's one of those things where it's a, it's a hypothetical of what would those values have been otherwise, with multiple variables going into those appraisals, not just Harvey. So, we, I do want to look at that once we receive the detailed tax.
All you can do is look at them compared to the same property the previous year.
We were on the way, we were beginning to, in Harris County, assessed value was beginning to slip before the hurricane. It's still, what was it, 11 something, or 13?
Montgomery County, it was 9%, Harris County, it's at 3% is our current estimates.
So, I agree with you, though, we've had, we've had this discussion a couple of times, like, what was our overall, what would it have been in Harris County? Now, most of that damage was not in our, I mean, we had a lot of damage in our area, everybody did. So, yeah, I think there's loss of revenue. Just so you'll know, I am testifying before a committee, the House, in September over the damage that we have from hurricane, and part of our, at the top of our list, and we really don't ask for money from the legislature specifically like that, we do it through the organization, but once we get a firm grip over this, there is money, we think, sitting there, and they're talking about how to distribute it, so that's what we're going to talk about. What is the, how much money are we out to make us whole, what would it cost? Because the other part of this is our enrollments. And so, what they were talking about was holding everybody harmless. Well, I don't know what that means, because we were up 5% or so before the hurricane came in, and then, now you see where we are. So, in a year's period, we're, we have a negative, looks like we're looking at a 7% to 10% decline after the hurricane. So, I'm not sure what holding us harmless means, we'll see, that's another discussion. All I know is that we had more damage than everybody else put together for the colleges we did, because of the flooding over at Kingwood, so.
And that, I mean, so that's an example of one of the places that I want to do some refinement on the 1.9 million that I have up here for loss of income, that is only based on student revenues, tuition and fee revenue on our credit hours. What we had not gotten to complete yet is an estimate of what the impact could be on the contact hour reimbursement from the state. So, that piece is not included in this estimate of loss of income.
Which is, if we have, if we are 4%, 5%, that is a considerable amount, we, you've heard, that's $6 million right now, so. That's why we have reserves, that's why we've been pretty conservative in our budgets. We can handle it, but it's because we worked so hard to get to this position where we could handle it, but I still think, when they have money available, and they're trying to figure out who to give it to, we need to ask for our share of it.
So, will our, will this affect our adjunct to full-time faculty?
Actually, I think in an odd way, it'll help us, it'll increase the number of full-timers teaching, and the reason for that is because our enrollments are dropping a little bit, so that, and I can't tell you right now, I'll know right after the semester starts, but the percentage taught by full-timers should go up, because we won't be offering as many suctions. And usually, those suction, I mean, the adjuncts are going to be the ones that are the most impacted by that. Does that make sense? So, we just don't hire as many adjuncts, so. I'm hoping, I don't, we, we're doing everything that we can right now. I mean, we're marketing all over the place, we added additional money in the marketing. I'm very open to, if we had, somebody else has ideas, we have been spending a lot of time talking about this, and the college Presidents will tell you, I send a note about once a week going, so what are you doing over there? And I'm not looking at anybody in particular, I'm just, as a whole, I want to make sure everybody's doing everything they can to help our students re-enroll. It's not just at Kingwood, though, it is pretty much across the board, where the enrollments seem to be slowing down. And part of that, we could attribute to the economy. The economy is pretty good in the Houston area, but still, it is, it is about the hurricane, especially over at Kingwood, that's, that's the issue over there, so.
When are you getting that money from FEMA? Have they given you a date?
When am I getting the money from FEMA? No, they have not given me a date.
So, what do we call it, D and B?
Well, no, I am hoping to get, I, I mean, everything's with them now, and we are responding to everything they're asking for, so I really am hoping to get the majority of, of these funds in the next six months.
Well, we have, the answer to that is, though, that, we have bond money if we needed to. We have reserves, where if we need to use the reserves, that's not what we wanted to do, but we have the money to cover, to make sure that we get Kingwood open. That was our number one priority, was getting Kingwood fully open again. So, we've got money in savings, or in our reserve account.
In our reserves.
And our, in the bond if we need to.
Yeah, so currently, I mean, we have, we have already spent more than we got in in insurance proceeds, so we are essentially self-financing ourselves at the moment to pay for this.
We're not, we're not shortcutting anything at Kingwood. Kingwood is being, I don't know, I mean, that's just what happens when you have damage in your house. Six of the nine buildings over there are really going to be in good shape, I think, and Catherine and her group have been working on kind of a, they're, they're doing their own thing over there. She's working with her faculty and staff and administrators to take advantage of this while we have it. So, Kingwood will be remodeled, and I, I think we're going to end up in a good spot over there. We just need to get it done, so everybody can get back to normal, so. Right? You would appreciate that, I'm sure, so. But we're, we're okay financially, I mean.
No sacrificial lambs, right?
No.
No.
Nope. Nope.
Nothing has been canceled, none of our projects have been canceled.
Everybody, everybody, you can talk to the Presidents if you want to, and the vice Chancellors. If we're down a little bit, and we don't hit our budget expectations, everybody, we, we take it out of everybody's budget, we'll take out a percentage, whether that be 1% or 2%, and we can, we can afford that, but I think it could happen. We had damage over at University Park, we had damage over at Cyfair, it impacts everybody. So, I think that when we, I mean, the nice thing about living in, living, about working in a system like ours is we can, when we have issues like this, everybody has to kick in, and we, we don't want one location, because it could happen to anybody. It really, I mean, you know, we could have a tornado, we could have a fire, and I think everybody needs to contribute to help us, help Kingwood get back on their feet, so.
So, the last thing I wanted to go through is our bond project opening date, so I'm actually kind of shifting now away from Kingwood, away from FEMA. The list here contains not, by any means, not all of the projects in the bond program, but these are certainly the most significant ones. So, you can see at, really at the top, I think, when this was on my computer, I had the rows that, of completed projects in gray, which now you can't see, but really, all the way down to UP Science Instructional Building. The top of the list down to there is, that's all projects that have been completed and have been opened. So, beginning about halfway down at Westway, and there on down is what we have still coming up in Phase 2 and Phase 3 of the Bond Project. So, the next one we have opening is Westway. It's, we're expecting that to be completed in October, so that, really, you're going to see the opening for that in the, in the spring here of 19. So, we have Westway, and then next fall, so fall of 2019, we'll have both the East Aldine Satellite Center and the Transportation and Logistics Institute opening up. Then, the following spring of 2020 is the Kingwood Healthcare Building, the Montgomery Student Services Building, and the University Park Performing Arts Building. And we continue on, right, fall of 2021 is when we'll complete the Houston North Victory Center expansion, Tom Ball Central Plant, some work there, and then an oil and gas training center, a student services building for Tom Ball, and then a Magnolia Satellite Center, and that one is still pending property acquisition.
So, there's 20 projects in there. I think I mentioned to you before, I think we're moving too slowly, and then I look at what we've done, and so, we've done a lot of work.
We've made it halfway through the list.
I'm really saying that, I'm really saying that for your staff, because I know we're doing a lot of work, and yes, I keep asking, how come we're not moving quicker, but that's because the Presidents keep asking me, how come we're not moving quicker? But we have broken ground on East Aldine, and as you mentioned, the Advanced Technology Center at Westway is, we're well on our way there, so we're, we're in good shape. And we have, Ken, to answer part of your question, we, we budgeted for all this, we have all this in the budget, and we've had it all in the budget in our five-year plan, so we can handle all of this, so we just have to manage our money properly, and we're going to talk about the budget in a few minutes, so.
Jennifer, you know, back when, and I apologize for this, but when you talked about FEMA, all of the, all of the documentation that was required, were you able to do that with the existing staff, or did you have to bring somebody else in to help do that?
Oh, that's why we got the consultants, yeah, we got the consultants to do that, both in terms of just the expertise and the other staff hours. We had GP Strategies was the consultant there, but their cost is actually part of what we are able to submit to FEMA for reimbursement.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so that's included in those project worksheets.
Okay.
They help pay for themselves.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, one thing I wanted, when we're talking about Kingwood, I think you received a note, so your dental hygiene, despite all of this, you had 100% success, right? And some of you, I know Dave Holsey saw it, because you responded to that, but I thought, good grief, of all that, so 100% of the students that passed their state exams, in spite of the hurricane and everything.
They pass, excuse me, the National Board and the State Board, and there's not a school within a nuclear weapon of here that doesn't have close to double-digit failure every year? And so, we have a singular program, and boy, the people are lining up down the street trying to get in. Good luck.
Catherine did take a vacation this year, I didn't hear from her, she went to Montana or someplace. Montana? Where I didn't hear from her, I wasn't even sure she was going to come back, but she's, and I was glad she didn't communicate, because she needed to take a break, so.
Good job, Doctor.
She has done a great job, so thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, Board members, are, you now have the opportunity to make comments about meetings and conferences that you've attended over the last couple of months, so who would like to discuss any worthy item that they have been involved with over the last couple of months? Go ahead.
No, my, my only question would be on the workforce, the executive order that came out, that the President signed, that there's like 7 million openings, and according to the ACCT, the community colleges is pretty well strapped with that burden, and there's going to have to be some innovation and collaboration, and some real things are going to have to happen with respect to turning this thing around. So, and I guess my question is, I know we've got, we've spent a lot of money, we've done a lot of things, and I'm, I'm especially excited about the Process Technology Center in Kingwood, and at this point, I would like to know, you know, as a salesman, whatever, if there's anything I can do to help, if you have some classrooms that you want to help fill up, and if I can help, if you want to fill up that Process Technology Center, go into the AICHE, ASME, American Petroleum, whatever, just, just let me know, because the, the, this is a crisis, and I know in the districts and the people that I deal with every day, this, this is, this is, this is real, and, and the 34 years that I've been in this community, working through volunteering and going into these multi-housing communities with the church and different groups, there, there's a lot of people out there that this is, this could really benefit. And so, whatever help is needed, you know, Steve, let me know, and like I said, I would love to see every space that we have workforce-related field, if that's possible. Now, you know, I may be daydreaming, I don't know, but, but I would like to see that happen.
That's our goal, you don't, you don't know this, and I'm glad you, I, the administration, the Trump administration is working with the AACC over some of these workforce issues, and I was at a meeting week before last, so I've been asked to serve on the Committee for AACC to help work with the Department of Labor and Department of Education implementing some of those workforce, so you'll be hearing more about that.
Well, are we, will we be at liberty to get any funding? I mean, you're talking about releasing dollars.
Yeah, we already, we already do. Yeah, we already, we already do, um, I'll tell you what I'd, if, if you want, I'll just give you a report at the next meeting, because yes, we, we have been receiving some of that federal funding, but it hasn't been flowing down the way we would like to see it, it's very, um, I, I'll give you a report. So, we have, it's, uh, it's, it's not that simple, it's very, it's very cumbersome, uh, to get some of the money that's coming out of the Department of Labor, although we get quite a bit, uh, Beth, how many, what do, do you know how much off the top of your head we're getting from Department of Labor or TWC? Six or eight million, that much? A year?
TWC gives dual warrants, three to four million dollars.
Year, okay. All right, we'll get your report, though.
Yeah, and I, I wanna say to, uh, as far as, I know I got excited when I found out about the Mechatronics, which is a combination of chemical, uh, not chemical, electrical, mechanical, controlled robotic, and to see a program like that, two years, ten grand, and then a seventy thousand dollar salary, I mean, that's, that's exciting.
Okay, Anyela reports.
Yeah, real quick, uh, last couple of weekends, um, I've attended, um, events at, uh, you know, back-school events, there's one at Aldine High School, another one at, uh, this last weekend at M.O. Camel, and that's, um, and, um, I was pleasantly surprised, uh, from folks, um, that know about, you know, people that just, parents or, or neighbors of mine, uh, mentioned that they had heard about the, um, college number seven, that's what they said, um, LSC, Houston North, North, right? I, I wanna make sure I'm saying it right.
That is correct.
And, and the, and the good thing about that is that, um, um, I don't know, I thought, you know, cause this board member, you know, we discuss this occasionally, you know, and, and Quentin, you know, he shares information with us, Steve, and, and a lot of things happening, uh, but the, but just seeing the, the people in my neighborhood, the people that, um, actually there, especially at Aldine High School, where if, uh, sure, maybe you don't, many of you, maybe people don't know, um, that, you know, the first classes of Lone Star were held at, at Aldine High School, right? So, so most people make sure they're reminded of that, so, uh, so it's just exciting to know that the word's getting out and, and, and people are talking about it and, and, um, and looking forward to, to hearing more about it, um, and, and I did promise that, you know, we'd go back and, and continue to get some feedback from them and, and report back to them. Uh, one particular person was so excited, she was telling me where we should open campuses, and of course, not that I hadn't heard this one before, but she was excited and she was adamant about, this is perfect use for Greensport Mall. Of course, and I mean, I, I, I told her about how, uh, the future respite for us and how much we wanna, uh, Lone Star will continue to be part of the community, so just wanted to share that with you guys. Thanks.
Thank you, Art. Uh, over the last month or so, I attended a meeting in Austin, and it was with the Community College, uh, Association of Texas Trustees, along with, uh, the chancellors, and basically what we talked about was what our legislative agenda was gonna be for this coming legislative session, and the thing that pleased me most is I was very, very happy that the trustees' agenda for the legislature was identical to the chancellor's agenda. You know, that may not be unique, uh, for a community college, but to me, that's unique in America, when you have a governing board and the administrators agreeing on the same stuff and going down the same pathway, and as a result of that, I think will have a greater impact, you know, in Austin during this next session. Also, there, um, I am very, very pleased, there's a guy, and I know I've probably met him, but at my age, I can't remember anything once I've slept, but there's a guy by the name of Jeb Young, and Jeb has been sending us, is, is he here tonight?
Jeb.
Jeb, okay. Oh, my God. I, I know him, I, I just didn't connect the names. Well, to tell you, and at least I'm honest, but I tell you what he has been doing, he has been sending us data, seems like almost on a daily basis, on how the word is getting out about Lone Star. And there's a couple of things that really struck, there's a lot of things that struck me, but today, I noticed in a paper called The Mirror, I think it's The Mirror, and The Mirror is, 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 I guess it's an insert in the Houston Chronicle in my side of town, and it talked about, uh, showcasing new technology at LSC, and it was basically about a program that they have at UP, where they are making sure, and I don't know all of the details, I, uh, and at least I don't need to go into all of the details, you can read it, but it's, what it appeared to me is a couple of instructors, a couple of staff members, were heavily involved with making sure that our folks were equipped with technological skills when they leave here, so that they could be employable, and I thought that was awesome, that we have staff, you know, that are working hard to make sure that our students are prepared for the jobs that are coming down the pike, and to me, that is critical. That didn't happen back in my day, you know, we, we were told to take stuff, whether it made sense or not, nobody seemed to care. Uh, that was one thing that I really enjoyed. The second thing I enjoyed, this came out of Sci Fair, and I don't remember the names of the kids or the ages, but there was a half-sister and brother that were eleven or twelve or thirteen years old, that did not function quite well as they could have functioned when they were in the ISD, and so their parents had the wherewithal to homeschool them. In some kinda way, they were able to complete high school four or five years ahead of time. If I'm, I think I'm correct, one of them is already enrolled in Aldine, I mean, I'm in Sci, uh, in Sci Fair, and the other one is getting ready to enroll, and again, what I saw there was Lone Star meeting the needs of everybody, you know, regardless of who they are. I mean, when I think of Houston North, I say, you know, we are attacking issues as issues come up, and I wanna congratulate the administrators and everyone involved with making sure that we are doing what we need to be doing to make sure the world becomes a better place, you know, for everybody, and so I'm happy, happy to see that, and keep those articles, articles coming, and, uh, and I really appreciate it, and then the thing I noticed, though, after you, uh, you send the articles ahead of time a lot of times, I stayed in the Chronicle all of a sudden later on, so, so we're well-informed, and then thank you for doing that. Also-
I neglected to, uh, introduce Jeffrey Richard. Jeffrey, you wanna stand up and tell them who you are? He is the former chair of Austin Community College, so I ask him to- He wanted to come down and see how a real community college operated. No, we're not, so, not really, no, he's, uh, we've known each other for, I don't know, twelve or thirteen, I don't know, long time, so, uh, he was down here on some other business, he talked, he met with Quentin today, but I wanted to make sure you, he was very active when, uh, when you mentioned Tac, I had, I had your name written down, but I left my notebook in somewhere around here, and, um, he's been, he was very active in, uh, association also, so.
Yeah, well, we were in a session together, weren't we? Yes, I was quite impressed with you. All right.
The other thing I had was, don't forget Astros Night is, uh, August the fourteenth, which is next week, and board members, if you don't, your tickets, you should have your tickets, so, and just so you'll know, we're not sitting out there so that you can't see, we, uh, moved the seats down on the left-field line, so you don't need a pair of binoculars to actually see the ball, so, uh, these are much better seats, I think, and, so, we're hoping that you can be there, that's always fun. I am well aware that it is a, uh, in the middle of the week, I, I, I've got that, my grandkids are having some, they're not, my son is having angst over having them out on a school night, but I told him, they, I mean, come on, so, so.
Okay, thank you. Helen, do we have any, uh, citizens wishing to speak?
John Bergduff.
No, there is, I'm not coming back. Yeah.
Good evening.
I am, I am John Bergduff, representing the American Federation of Teachers. It has been, uh, three months since I last spoke to you. Uh, last month was your annual summer break. Uh, on the afternoon of the June meeting, I was in Rosenberg with the delegation of faculty and administrators from Sci Fair, meeting with our counterparts in the Lamar Consolidated Independent School District. We were meeting to plan Lone Star's newest dual-credit collaboration, extending our college's outreach to high school students in western Fort Bend County. It's a great opportunity for the students, uh, but too far away for me to get to the woodlands in time to speak. Tonight, you have before you the final vote on Lone Star College's budget for the coming fiscal year. With the losses we have had to overcome with Harvey, especially at Kingwood, the union recognizes that this has to have been one of the most difficult budgets the college has had to develop. In the face of many obstacles, we are very glad to see the college's commitment to hire additional full-time faculty. Improving the percentage of classes taught by full-time faculty improves our students' access to professors who can devote their full-time and efforts to Lone Star College and its programs. We are also glad to see money set aside to resolve lingering discrepancies in classification and compensation among our staff that have been hurtful to employee morale in the past. In addition, we acknowledge the two percent pay increase for most college employees. Two percent matches the cost-of-living adjustment the Social, the Social Security Administration has selected for its beneficiaries for two thousand eighteen. Although these rates of increase are consistent with one another, as a labor union, we need to point out some concerns. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the Consumer Price Index has risen two-point-nine percent in the twelve months ending in June. Also, according to the Human Resources Professional Group, World at Work, as reported by the Society for Human Resource Management, the projected median increase in salary across all sectors and job types in two thousand eighteen is expected to be three percent. So, while we recognize the challenges our current budget situation poses, we must attest that Lone Star employees, uh, Lone Star employee pay for the coming year will fall behind both inflation and median salaries across the economy. We also must note our concern that for the second year in a row, salaries for adjunct instructors will not be increased at all. Adjunct faculty continue to account for well over half of all classes taught at Lone Star College, and yet many of them have to work multiple jobs to eke out a minimal living with no benefits. Adjunct pay at Lone Star has now fallen below our largest neighboring community college systems. An adjunct teaching a standard three-hour lecture class with us earns two thousand four dollars over a semester. The same adjunct teaching the same class would earn two thousand ten dollars at Houston Community College and two thousand sixteen dollars at San Jacinto College. Although the differences are small, being behind at all seems out of place in a system that by all accounts is in much better overall financial health than almost all other colleges. Again, the union both recognizes and appreciates the special challenges this budget year presents, and expresses our sincere hope that the concerns we raise need to be addressed in future budgets. We also wish to remind the board of our presentation at the May meeting, in which we showed that at the cost of three grande lattes per month to a typical homeowner, Lone Star's property tax rate could be brought up to the state average and generate an additional one hundred and twenty-three million dollars. We ask the board to consider, consider whether even now, additional revenues like these could be brought to bear this year to minimize the salary concerns we raise. Finally, the board will be considering tonight a renewed contract for our chancellor. The proposed salary for the coming year is not published in the official agenda, so we do not know what is being considered at this point. The union believes that all employees deserve to be fairly compensated for the work they do, and that includes the chancellor. Stating the proposed salary in the agenda would have lent greater transparency that would inspire greater trust. We hope that, in the spirit of solidarity, whatever salary is approved should be consistent with the percentage salary increases of all other employees. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Okay. Right. That's the only one, Helen? Okay, thank you. Board members, at this point, we will consider the consent agenda, and so far, items four and five will be considered separately. Is that correct, Chancellor? Items four and five?
Four and five.
Four and five, okay. So, I would like to have a motion to, to consider and adopt items one through three and six through forty-two. So, moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, that we approved those particular items. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. We will now consider item four separately, which is the budget item.
Yeah, so, in front of, uh, at each of your spots, you should have received a printed copy of the proposed budget. I'm gonna say inside of there, too, is a couple of loose pages for the letter from the CFO. There was a couple of numbers that were off in the printed version, we caught it, and so, but it was after the print, uh, so that letter is in, inserted inside your book, just so you are aware.
Okay, thank you.
Can you tell us what's, what was on?
I'm gonna go through that in the slides, I will tell you. Uh, yeah, so, the, I mean, the outline of the budget, we went through in significant detail at the budget workshop in June, so I just have a couple of slides here to give the highlights, um, there, cause there have not, there have only been minor changes since that time. So, for our FY two thousand nineteen budget highlights, which starts September first for revenues, we have estimated one hundred and sixty-one million of tax revenues for operations, this is an increase of nine million dollars over fiscal year eighteen, and this is at a flat tax rate of ten-point-seven-eight cents. We have also assumed one hundred and twenty-four million of tuition and fees, this is assuming a, and this is significant to note, because this is assuming a zero percent growth for the whole year in credit hours, um, so that is something we are gonna need to continue to watch closely, um, to see where we end up, but that in the budget is six-point-eight million increase over fiscal year eighteen, and a good portion of that increase does, because I mentioned it's assumed zero percent growth, so the actual increase over the prior year comes from, uh, fee increases that the board approved in March, that included the differential fee, which increased an average of a dollar, an increase in the out-of-district fees of ten dollars, and an increase in the out-of-state international fees of thirty dollars. There is also an increase in corporate college revenues, um, and, uh, some contingency for corporate training opportunities in that six-point-eight million increase over fiscal year eighteen, and that is the number that changed in my letter. In my letter, there's a paragraph talking about student revenues, the, in the book, it says five-point-four million, and that five-point-four had only included the fee increases, not these additional revenues from corporate college, and if you did the, the math in that paragraph, the math did not match, so we corrected that, so that's where that correction comes from. And then finally, there's seventy-eight million in state appropriations, which is the, uh, flat to fiscal year eighteen, since we're in the second year of the biennium.
I do wanna remind the board that when we get our allocation, we get a flat dollar amount from the state that lasts to last for two years, so they split it, so when we do the budget, uh, the second year of the budget, we have to be careful with the budget, I mean, we have to, when we have to do the first year of the budget, we need to be careful, because the state appropriations are probably not gonna be changing, so, the way we have to make decisions depends on assessed value and what we think our growth is, we, so, the money comes from three sources. It comes from the tax revenues, it comes from tuition and fees, it comes from state appropriations, so the state appropriations are the same for two years. So the state appropriations are the same for two years. So when we make any changes at all, and add anything, it's limited that second year. So we make most of the major decisions the first year of the biennium.
So that is the revenue highlights. In the expenditure highlights, this does not list all. A more detailed list is in the budget books in front of you, but some of the significant new initiatives in our expenditures in this proposed budget is 5.1 million for a staff compensation project, 4 million for 2% raise, and then 3 million to cover the cost of new facilities. Earlier, I showed you the list of new facilities that we are working to open. Another 2.2 million for 30 new faculty, $2 million additional added to safety and security. There was 1 million that got allocated out to the campuses based on their growth and their performance metrics. And then we have 783,000 in this budget also, as we begin to ramp up Houston North. So those are the significant expenditure highlights.
We'll come back in, probably at the next meeting, and talk about the staff compensation project, but that is a multi-year period. It'll be over $20 million that we want to increase staff salaries, but we'll come back in and give you an update on that at the next, at the next board meeting, so.
So in summary, the book that is in front of you is a 449 million proposed budget. In that is 382 million of operating expenditures and 67 million of debt service. I did talk about this at the June workshop. This budget does include a 782,000 use of reserves. This is another spot where there is a small, a minor change from what I presented at the June workshop. At that point in time, it was about 620,000 use of reserves, so it did increase a little bit to 782, and that just came from, it was just sort of a list of minor adjustments as we went through and built the detailed budget, right? In June, we present the outline, and then throughout June and July, the finance team and really the team from all of Lone Star College works and builds the detail behind that budget. So we are doing the 782,000 use of reserves, but to note there, we are ending FY 18 significantly above where we had budgeted. We had budgeted to end fiscal year 18 at 17% cash reserves, and currently, we are forecasting to end it at 18%. So, that number was 6-something million, 6.3, I believe, million, over where we had expected to end. So we, of that 6.3 million, we're using 782,000 of it towards the fiscal year 19 budget.
While you're on this topic, remember that both Standard and Poor's and JP Morgan have advised us to get up to $20 million, and we're going out for bond sales sometime, well, we'll have another credit rating after the first of the year, sometime in early '19 or late '18.
Early '19.
Early '19, and then we will sell 100 and...
We have 180 million left, 185 million left of the 100.
So those ratings are very important, and the amount of money that we have in the reserves is very important, so, to save us millions of dollars in the repayment, or the, yeah, well, for the bonds.
So that's the summary of the budget in front of you. So from here, obviously, August 2nd, today, this is for you to vote and adopt this budget to begin September 1st. Then later in August is when we receive the certified tax rolls from the appraisal districts. That gets presented to the board on September 6th at our next board meeting, and then there will, from there, there will be two tax rate hearings. Currently, we have these scheduled for September 18th for the first tax rate hearing, and then September 26th for the second tax rate hearing, and then October 4th, the October board meeting, is when the board would be asked to adopt the tax rate, which in this proposed budget is the 10.78 cents.
Just a quick comment.
Yes.
Just a reminder to the board, we need a quorum at both the 18th and the 26th.
Absolutely.
Yes, we do need a quorum.
Thank you, good.
So that is the, that's the budget, and I do want to take the opportunity, first, if I could revisit your FEMA question earlier, where I said we did hire consultants, we did, but I in particular want to mention Stephanie Wright on the finance team, has been the Lone Star College employee, who has been sort of the day-to-day contact with those consultants, and with FEMA, and so she has done a tremendous amount of work on that, and so has, I mean, a lot of people throughout Lone Star College and Lorena Ficini's team, and Stephanie's on her team, has done a lot of work there on the FEMA submissions. And then the budget here, too, in front of you, that the finance team, and then, I mean, a lot of staff throughout Lone Star College, at all the different colleges, everyone puts a lot of work into all of this. So I do want to say thank you to them.
Well, and that's what I suspected, and you know who, you know me, I would like to thank those folks that went over, as I call it, over and beyond, you know, to help us achieve what we need to achieve to get the business done. So, finance folks, thank you for doing that, and you're making us look good continuously, and thank you.
This has been, yeah, I agree, thank you. This budget's probably the most, since I've been in my, July the 30th, I finished 34 years here, my 34 years, this was the most difficult budget that I've been associated with because of all the issues that we're dealing with, with the hurricane, and we have known for some time the possibility of our drop in enrollment, and so we've been trying to figure all that out and making sure that, we always hope for the best, and we prepare for kind of the worst-case scenario. I am confident that we're going to be okay in the spring, as we get into the spring, but we have a lot of work to do, and we just need to get everybody whole, and then we'll regroup and go forward, so, and I think we're going to be fine in the budget, but we have to be careful with the budget. I want to make sure we don't get ourselves overextended in the budget, so, and I think we're fine with our budget that we have here.
Yeah, in my other life, the only thing, I'm a positive-type guy, and then the only thing in my jobs I'd never liked was budget. I hated that time of the year, and so I admire all of the folks that work on that because I received a lot of help, you know, when I was working a real job, and so thank you. And also, I want to make sure that I heard the chancellor correctly. When you mentioned the allocation for staff salaries, that you will come back later on with a more detailed report on what that means and how it was done and et cetera. Okay, thank you.
Quick question. So on that, just because the point was raised tonight, I would like to raise the issue of salaries. Can we do that now, or should we do that?
What now?
I would like to raise the issue of salaries, since the point was raised tonight.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So 2%. So it's 2%, that's our target, faculty pay increase?
Yes, it's 2%, let me go back.
And it's been that way for a while, so I guess my question is, feedback from faculty and staff, what's their ideal target? If 2% isn't seen as being sufficient, have, has there been a target expressed of saying we would like to see it at 3 or 3.2 or something along those lines, that maybe we give some guidance to the administration when crafting the budget?
Not specifically. I want to add also that we have been picking up, when the state passes on additional costs, we've been picking that up, so if it would help, we can come back to the next meeting and talk about salary increases plus what we absorb in the budget, and maybe do some comparisons with other colleges. Our employees, for the most part, they're, all of their insurance is paid for, for example, and that's not true at all locations, all colleges, so, so no, to answer your question, and part of this, as I'm looking at these numbers, and the reason we keep looking down here, by the way, for the rest of you, is because of all of our screens are down here, but we have decisions to make, and I thought that in, from a priority standpoint, that I thought we had fallen, I don't think the staff are underpaid, I don't think that at all, but we want to make sure, we know, I mean, faculty and staff are doing the work, and we know that, so we had raised faculty salaries, and we always take a look at administrators, and we do some comparisons, but I think with staff, that we need to do a better job of making sure that, we have some really top-notch staff here. We want to make sure that they want to come to work here, and that they stay here, and that they're, they feel like they're being treated equitably, and we want them to enjoy coming to work here, that's part of our culture, so, so to answer, no, we have not received that kind of...
Target increase, just, it's probably more difficult than it is with adjunct, because they're, in terms of a comparison across other community colleges, because there's no benefits associated with adjuncts, right? But is there any way to compare across other districts how our compensation packages compare with our neighboring colleges?
Yes, we can get that for you. I mean, just so you know where the 2% comes from, that usually comes from me. We're taking a look at inflation, and we have people inputting, and we talk about what we think is reasonable, what we can afford. I mean, this year, this year particularly, we just had to make decisions, and we did not want to put off the staff anymore than we had, because we had been talking about, when I first became the chancellor in '14, we've been talking about these staff salaries, so these are the decisions that we make. Do we have plans in the future? Yes, we do, for, I'm aware where we are with adjuncts, and yes, we, I would agree that we need to take a close look at that, and we had already been talking about that for next year's budget, where we know that the budget will be, I think, we're being pretty good shape in the budget, so.
Thank you.
How much is 1%? A 1% raise, how much money are we putting in? What's a 1% raise cost for full-timers, do you know?
I am not going to give that number off the top of my head. I don't know it off the top of my head.
How much, do you know how much, what are we, what are we doing? It's considerable, so when we talk about whether it be a 2 or 4 or 5 or whatever it is, it's...
About 2 million.
How much?
About 2 million.
2 million for each percentage point?
Because I have my, yes, about 2 million.
Okay. So, we, I mean, these are just decisions we have to make, so. I tell you, in the budget, when we're looking, we put money, you might take a look at the safety and security budget, that jumped up. We don't have the, we have these in descending order, so I would have put the 2% and the, for everybody, and then the, the staff increases up there together. And so, we've got the new facilities coming up, and we don't have a lot of flexibility on the 3 million, because we've already fact that in, but then, where we have to start making decisions is, okay, we had agreed that we'll increase the new faculty, we had already posted those jobs, and so safety and security, we're spending a lot of money on upgrades for safety and security and hiring new people to make sure, I mean, it's what's happening across the country, but I think I gave you a report already, I know I sent it to you, that we are, I'm on the governor's safety and security committee, Lone Star is at the top of the list when it comes to safety and security. I'm talking about the proactive, and the chief of, the chiefs here, and Mario have been spending a lot of time over this. We're doing more than just about anybody else that I can, especially among community colleges, and I think that's really important to us, but there's just, we just have to make decisions about where the money's going.
Steve, can I say something? We do have to make decisions, we have to make hard choices all the time, but when we compare the rate of an increase in our employees' salaries to some of these other things, we're saying essentially that we value these other things more than we value the quality of life of our employees, and I think that's a dangerous place to go. You asked for a target, I think the CPI is a reasonable place to start.
Okay, anything else, Jennifer? Okay, if not, I'd like to have a motion to adopt item four, the second.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, that we adopt item four. Any additional questions or comments? If not, all of those...
I have a question.
Okay, sure.
What increase in revenues would we gain by percentage of increase in tax rate?
What was your question?
Our tax rate.
What percentage of revenues? So about a penny increase in the tax rate would generate, I think, I think about another 13 million?
13 to...
About 13 million?
13 to 15 million. We're approaching 200 billion, so with, yeah, 13 to 15 million, or 1 cent, which would be a little less than, it'd be about an 8% tax increase. So...
And so that's in the operating budget, so that would get added to the 161 million of tax revenues for operations, so currently, I mean, so I had the charts in the budget workshop presentation, currently, we are at about 42% of our revenues coming from tax revenues, and about 32% coming from student revenues. So the tax revenues are already the largest proportion of our revenues, at 42%, so certainly adding 13 million, I mean, without sitting down, I could grab my calculator and calculate what that pushes that to, but that would obviously increase that further.
We need to remind everybody, remind the board that we have a proposal for a budget philosophy, which would put us on an even keel, that the percentage that taxpayers would be, would be equal to what students pay. We're on track to do that, that's the proposal, so, and so, so it changes what we're looking at in the future.
And so that, and I know we always harp on this, we say this at almost every meeting, that in reality, we're balancing, we're going from a three-legged stool in our, in our revenue to a two-legged stool, and that is because the state government is...
That's correct.
...is receding from what they've done in the past. When I was first on the board, when we opened a new center, we got funds from, special funds from the state to cover our hiring of the new, the new faculty and staff to run that center when it's open, because our budgets for that time period were all based on the students we had and the facilities we had two years prior, or a year prior, whenever the budgets were set on the two-year cycle, so we've taken on all of that with all of the growth we've had, and continue, continue to see, so that's, it's making a...
What you talked about was, when we opened Montgomery, we received a special item appropriation for that. I think that's probably what you're talking about, and so we don't, that doesn't happen anymore. They don't, they don't do those kind of things anymore, so...
Yeah, so any benefit we get from the centers does come significantly lagged. If opening a new center, opening a new program increases contact hours, then we receive credit for those contact hours.
Right, but it's always behind, in this particular case, we receive the money to help that, get that open, and they just don't do that anymore, so.
Why not? Why are they not doing that anymore?
Well, the generally, generally, community colleges do not have special item requests. They don't do that, because if you start doing that and you get into competition, you're going to have Houston, Lone Star, Alamo, the big ones, would chew up the money. So right now, the request is for $144 million for the biennium, that's 72, and if we had special item appropriations, and us, Houston, Dallas, Alamo, each receive 3 or 4 or 5 million, then it doesn't leave any money for everybody else, so that's why. But the philosophy has been exactly what Dave said, they've been pushing this cost, as they have with the ISDs. The ISDs have the same issue we have, they're pushing that down to local, the local taxpayers. That's why, it's just a different philosophy of the role of the state, and that's changed a lot over, I think when I started here, the state was giving us 63 or 64% of our money, something like that, and now there, we'll be down to 21 this year, so.
Steve is being diplomatic. Can I answer your question? No one has ever won a seat in the state legislature by proposing increasing funding to community colleges. It's a matter of politics.
What do you go from there? You change the politics, or you change, no, is it civic engagement, or what? What do we, is there anything we can do?
Well, yeah, I mean, yes, we can talk about it outside of this meeting, but I think when we go to these, when you go with us to the state legislature this year, you'll see what some of the issues are. Yeah, we'd be glad to, yeah, I'd be glad to take you there with us, yeah.
But you know, but you know the same thing is happening nationwide.
Right.
All of the states are decreasing public education funding for some reason. Okay, any other questions? If not, all of those in... Any other questions? If not, all those in favor of item four, vote by the usual sign?
Aye.
Any opposed? Jennifer, you still on?
Yes.
Item five.
Insurance.
All right.
Yeah, I thought I would just stay up here.
Yes.
Okay.
I was wondering why you were still there. Go ahead.
Item five, yes, another one.
Jennifer, make sure the mic.
Yeah, I was just, I pushed it up while I was flipping my pages. So everyone's favorite topic, insurance. I just want to go through, this does come in front of the board annually every August. It was here last August, prior to Harvey, and it was not a topic of conversation. So tonight, though, I think we're going to go through exactly what's changing in our insurance coverages. We are increasing our coverages, definitely. You saw the direct impact estimates of Harvey on Lone Star College. Our flood limit payout on our policies currently was $10 million. Liberty Mutual came out, they walked the Kingwood campus for just a couple of hours and said, okay, we're going to write you that check for $10 million because there's easily more damage here than that. So if you look at your action item number five and flip to, it's about the third page, appendix A. Appendix A gives you a list of all of the different policies that we are looking to renew for the September 1st fiscal year. And this does compare for you the annual fiscal 2008 premium to what it, we're looking at the fiscal year 2019 premium to be. And then you can see the variance. If you look all the way down at the bottom to the total, you can see we are increasing our premium cost by 1.2 million. But if you look, look through that list, it's really pretty much small amounts here or there. The big chunk comes in the property insurance.
Jennifer, just so the board's clear, if you're looking on their iPad, it's on page 38, I believe.
The exhibit's on 40.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Look at exhibit A is the exhibit.
Yeah, 40 is where she's talking about right now, so, okay.
Yes. So my next couple of slides here pretty much only deals with property insurance because as you can see here, that's the one with the significant change on this list. Okay, and here I will say, so of the 1.1 million, about half of that was just an increase in the premium cost to keep the same level of coverage. Right? Any insurance policy, you use it and then they increase the cost on you. So about, it was about 600,000, 1.3 million to 1.9 million was the increase in that cost just to keep the same level of coverage as we currently have. So the other half of that, the other 500 to 600,000, is us increasing our coverages. So here I have our limits overview comparing between our current policy to the policy we are looking at beginning next fiscal year. So there you can see our total insured values. We are looking at 1.5 billion. That is, so that is all of our buildings and our contents. Lone Star College property is valued at 1.5 billion. We are also, and I'll go into more detail on a following slide. Loss of rents and business interruption. Currently, we have coverage of up to 2 million there. We are also going to have some increases there, which goes into more detail, like I said, on a following slide. And then these 10 million coverages for earth movement. You see the 10 million for flood limit, but then below that is a line that says an additional 10 million. So we are adding another 10 million there of coverage. So this is some overview of the limits.
Can you go back just for a second?
Yeah.
You might want to take a look at the bottom, just so you'll see what all's, what all we're looking at for insurance purposes these days. These are discussions we've been having. I mean, when you look, take a look at this, you can get insurance for anything, but given everything that's happened, I mean, it's just part of, part of what's going on, so.
Yes, and I mean, I guess, like I said, there's 151 million of business interruption coverage that we're adding. And like I said, the following slide breaks that down to where that number comes from. So this slide summarizes our deductibles. We are not making significant changes here to the deductibles. On most claims, the deductible is 25,000. If it's due to earth movement, it's 100,000 deductible. The flood deductible, which is our current one, so we're not changing this. For Harvey, we pay the deductible of 100,000. We're not changing that. A name storm, it's just a slight change here. Currently, it's any name storm, the new policy will be for hurricanes only. Windstorm damage, it's a 2% per building deductible. And then you can see, we are going for all other wind and hail. That deductible will be 100,000 and then 25,000 and so forth for these other smaller items.
Jennifer, why are we switching to hurricane only? Tropical Storm Allison did significant damage in Houston in 2001.
So, two things. One, it's just a change, if you notice, we're going to be changing our carrier, just who proposed a better price, is we are no longer going to have Liberty Mutual as the carrier. It's now, Amerisk is the, would be the new carrier, and this is how they write their policy. This is actually a benefit to us, though, because a, like Allison, since it's not a hurricane, would then be considered in either the flood or all other peril, which is a $25,000 deductible. So now only if it's a hurricane does it switch to a deductible of 2% per building, which is a higher deductible. So this is actually an improvement. Yes.
So if we did have Harvey, or we had another Allison, where does that come under the, what's covered there? High hazard flood? Or just flood?
I guess, I mean, what was the damage to Lone Star College from Allison? I wasn't here for Allison.
How much are we, well.
So for Harvey.
It only ran like 42 inches with Harvey, but it rained, you know, the other, but so what, but not here necessarily. It rained upstream. But so where would we be covered if we had another Harvey?
If we have another Harvey, it, it's going to be under flood, which is the 100,000 deductible.
And what's the, what's the other, how much are we eligible for on the, on the other slide?
That's my next slide, increased coverages. So this slide is just to show our deductibles. And then here's where I'm going through our increased coverages. So the first thing that we are going to do is purchase flood insurance through FEMA. The new policy would actually require us to do this on what they consider the high hazard sites. We decided it was a pretty good price to just go ahead and purchase this FEMA flood insurance. That's the National Flood Insurance Program, system-wide. So if we have another Harvey, this insurance policy hits first. And there, it is, it's 500,000 per building and then another 500 for content. So really about $1 million per building. So in the case of Harvey, for some reason FEMA likes to just do it by building. So in the case of Harvey, we had six buildings flood, we could have put a claim in for $6 million under this policy.
The reason I wanted her to go through all this is because we spent time going through, we didn't see the worst-case scenario. We came close to it. If the tornado would have hit Sci Fair directly, we could have had, those buildings are anywhere from 20 to 40 million a piece right now. And so we had a flood. It, we flooded at two of our locations and we had a tornado hit the top of Sci Fair. So when we were going back to take a look at this, it could have been a lot worse than what it was. So we want to make sure that we're covered under, under our insurance policy. So we went through this one by one by one and it's expensive, but we need to be covered because you saw the total damage. It looks like right now it's going to be 45, around 45 million for us. So.
So, yeah, so, I mean, on top of that, through the insurance policy itself, we did increase the payout from 10 million to 20 million. So if you recreate Harvey, we would get 20 million from the insurance policy. And then from the National Flood Insurance Program with six buildings flooded, that would have been 6 million. So we would have seen 26 million.
The other thinking on this, if we have buildings that are $30 million, then, I mean, if we have to dip into the reserves, then that's another reason why we need, I didn't think we needed to get up to 20 before, but I, I'm beginning to see that, that if we had some, some flexibility in the contingency, I didn't think it was, I'd ever see 50 inches of rain in a short period of time, but we could easily. But the tornado is the one that really bothered me because that could have been just devastating to Sci Fair. Not only from the building standpoint, but the student income, the tuition and fees and the loss of business that we have over there. So, I mean, Kingwood was bad enough. Don't give me, I'm not diminishing what happened over there, but if we had thrown Sci Fair in there, it would have been a double hit for us, so.
I mean, so had that happened at Sci Fair under our current policies and then even under these new policies that we're looking at, that would have been, that would have been counted, I believe, as the windstorm. So that would have been a deductible of 2% per building. But then anything above that, up to a maximum limit of 300 million would have been covered, had that, had that occurred at Sci Fair. And then finally, we are adding business interruption insurance. So currently, for the enrollment declines, the tuition and fee declines that we are seeing at Kingwood, we do not have insurance coverage for that. So we are adding that piece here. You have loss of income tuition coverage of up to 87 million. Loss of rents, this was in our current policy, but at 2 million. And that just really, I think, hadn't been examined closely enough in a while because currently we are receiving annually about 8.2 million of rent. So we increased that amount. And then finally, we did put in also 90 days of payroll with the thought of, I guess, had Harvey been worse with the timing that it hit at the beginning of the semester, if for some reason we had lost a whole semester, we want to at least make sure we can continue to cover payroll. So this is 90, that 56 million is 90 days of payroll system-wide. So it's 151 million total of business interruption coverage. So, like I said, of the 1.1 million dollar increase in the premium cost, about half of that was just to keep the same level of coverages that we currently have today. The other half, this slide right here pretty much shows you what we're getting for that additional amount for the insurance.
So what's the total new money going in for insurance? How much money are we adding on the budget?
It's increasing our cost by 1.2 million. So our total insurance premium is going to be 3.9 million, which is a 1.2 million increase.
I'm just pointing out, that's another reason why this year's been particularly tough because of security issues, insurance issues, loss of, this has been a tough year to put the budget together, that's for sure, so.
Okay, our board members, I like, I need a motion in a second on item number five.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and properly seconded that we adopt item five. Any additional questions or comments?
So was this figure in the budget we just approved?
I had to put that budget together before I had all these numbers. I had put in an amount, assuming it would go up. I didn't, I did not put in enough. So some of the rest of this, I am going to have to work through this coming budget year. Because we don't, we did not get these premium costs until about a month ago. Actually, less than that. So, so I had already covered a portion of it in the proposed budget in front of you. The balance, I'm going to need to.
So you'll have to come back for a budget amendment?
No, no. We will be able to find it just through cost savings, through contingency funds. We will identify those funds somewhere.
Any additional questions? Comments? Not all?
I would like to see you come back with an explanation of how you make a difference, make up that difference.
Well, I can tell you off the top of your head, we can do that. And part of this is if we don't hire people, if we delayed the hires for 30 days for a while until we made up the money, but, and delayed some of the.
I know that. I know all that, but just.
We'll come back.
Okay, thank you.
And I was expecting to do something like that anyway, once we see official day numbers for fall enrollment, like we did in the spring, when spring enrollment came in lower than we had projected in the budget and we had to talk through where that decrease in revenue came from. I'm, it's looking like I'm going to need to do that for the fall semester. And so we have already kind of estimated what that might look like, that plus this amount. So yes, I can definitely come back and report on what.
Yeah, while you're here, so we think we're going to have a loss in the fall, but with the way we do the entire budget, it's in the spring. We'll take a look at spring enrollment number two. So that's higher than what we projected. But, but we'll get the numbers that you're, how we, how we plan on doing this. She and I had already talked about that. So we'll get that for you.
And also we have the, we'll get the certified assessed values, which may.
Yes, yes. That's one of the things on my list to look for. The estimates from the appraisal district.
Yeah.
Was 4.66% growth. It's just an estimate that they give us in April. So to be conservative, the budget is built on a 3.66% growth rate. We put in a 1% margin of error.
So we can make it up right there.
Hopefully, knock on wood, please. So yes, I get that certified rolls probably in another two to three weeks. And that's the first place I'm going to look for, for this and for any enrollment declines we might have in the fall.
Jennifer, thank you for your work. Outstanding.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded that we adopt item five. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. I'm sorry, Jennifer, you're still on.
I know, that's why I'm not sitting down yet.
All right. Well, we're really working you tonight, aren't we?
I'm on vacation next week.
Oh, good. Good for you.
Sorry, I'm trying to opening, open my book. This podium's not quite as wide. So going to the monthly financial report, what you have presented is the financial statements for the month ended June 30th, 2018. You also have them for the month ending May 31st, 2018. There's also the quarterly investment report for the period ending May 31st, 2018. So going through this report, page three shows where our forecasted variance is. And there you can see the, the report in front of you as of June 30th, we had, in your book, it's forecasting us to end at 17.8%, but even.
We're on, we're on page roughly 91 in the, if you have your iPad, we're, they're, it's not the way it normally is, so we're having to look to see where it is.
Yeah.
So it's about page 91, one-ish.
Yes.
I mean, so the good news I have here is, you saw when I went through the budget, is we already had some changes in our forecast from what got put into the report to you ending at 17.8%, where right now we're actually forecasting to end this fiscal year at 18%. And then from there, the other report, I definitely like to go through each month. If you go to, it's page five of the financial report. I don't know what page of your PDF it is.
93.
93. This is the report for Fund 35, which is our Harvey fund. I know I went through what we're hoping to get from FEMA and what our estimated total cost of damages is. But of course, we haven't actually spent all of that money yet. So this is where I'm showing you how much we've actually spent so far, which on this report is, on the far right side is 16.9 million is how much cash we have actually paid out on invoices so far related to Hurricane Harvey. And if you look below that, there's another 11.9 million encumbered that we expect to be spending soon. So this is something I keep putting in here because the first few months I put it in here, the amounts were relatively small. But as we are now in the build-back construction, this is where you're going to see the spending occur most quickly.
What month did we establish? What month did we establish Fund 35?
I mean, it was last fall, September, October. We did it pretty quickly.
September, October, yeah.
I mean, that standard, I guess I did that at the city of Houston multiple times. As soon as there was a storm, you made a separate fund.
No, I know we had it. I was just curious as to how quickly it had to be instituted.
It had to be in October.
The sooner the better. That way you're capturing all of those costs in one place.
Sure, thanks.
Yes. Yep. And so that, I mean, that concludes my report there. Like I said, ending the monthly forecast at 18% cash reserves. And Hurricane Harvey, we have actually spent almost 17 million so far. That concludes my monthly financial report.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Is that the first time you've gotten applause?
Board members, any future agenda items? If not, it is now 8:25.
We have a committee, we have a committee.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned.